Good afternoon. This is regularly scheduled meeting of the Athen City Planning Commission for June 7, 2007. It is 2:31. We have three members of our panel present. That is a quorum, so we can conduct business. Mr. Connechy is absent and Mr. Hasslett is absent. And we take sworn statements if you plan to say anything. Nobody's going to say anything. Do you swear that all your statements will be the truth or affirmed and all your statements are the truth?
Yes.
Okay. Our first case is number 0619. It's Blackburn Woods subdivision, Tom Lovedoll. And if I remember correctly, it concerns changing a shared driveway to separate driveways. That would mean another exit onto Blackburn Road. Is that right? I think, isn't that what we --
I think it was two.
Two, two, there'll be two instead of just one going in. Right. Okay. Did anybody go take a look at it?
I drove Blackburn Road and looked at where they had the lot signs. I'm not sure exactly where that is in relationship, but they did have lot, you know, lot three and a lot one sign, I think. They looked, they looked pretty close, especially lot one, to the crest of the hill. And I think that was
The problem.
-- our original concern when we approved the subdivision
Mm-hmm.
-- was safe access to my Blackburn Road.
Yeah, because we were out there that day. At least we three were, anyway.
Yeah, because it mentions that, I think staff put the April 20, April 3, 2003, that line of sight of driveways is a concern.
Yeah.
And have we heard Steve anything more from Mr. Lovedoll?
No.
I mean, all I've heard, and I believe you reported one time, because he's not been here, is that he says difficulty selling lots.
They don't like the, they didn't like the shared driveway, wasn't that what it was?
Yeah. I think what should be contained in the files is a written letter from Mr. Lovedoll that explains the situation.
Well, we don't have that.
And I believe that it did have to do with the desirability of two lots that are right before the main entrance to the subdivision, which at original plating had been accessed via an easement across another property where you turn back into the subdivision and an easement that came out to access two lots that fronted on Blackburn, North Blackburn Road.
Mr. --
In Mr. Lovedoll's letter, best my recollection, said that
It's here.
-- he would prefer to remove that easement from the properties that were on Larson's Way. And then the two lots, I believe it's two, right before the entrance, then would have to be accessed off North Blackburn Road via their own individual driveways.
He has here, they looked for lot four and on Larson Way, and they objected to the shared driveway. The driveway went back so that lots two, three, and five would have access. And so he wants, they want to change it, as you say. He wants the easement. They didn't like the easement through lot, on lot four, the people were going to want it. Lot five would have its own driveway, but it would go out onto Larson Way, so it's not a problem. It's two and three that would be the problem. They would have to go out onto Blackburn Road. He wants us to change, make this minor change to the final plat. That's it? But the problem, there is those two, right, right at the crest of the hill, aren't they? Just about, just when you come along there?
It was my understanding that Andy Stone, the street director, was going to go out and evaluate it according to, and I'm not sure what the traffic standards are that he uses. There's a national standard that
Yeah.
-- he uses as a guideline.
Does he, has he done that yet?
Uh, I
I don't see anything
I don't know.
-- in here. This is withdrawing some of the stuff. This is older stuff. This was at, most of this in here is that he wanted to change his zoning there for a while. They wanted to change it and that. And this is the notice.
Right, that's two lots. That was, that's a different case.
That's a different case.
That was two lots off Times Lane.
They've taken that, but that's what's in this, mostly in this file, except for that last thing.
So that's going to be three exits onto Blackburn, right there.
Well, it's going to be Larson Way comes out there.
Larson Way will be one of them, and two of three, lot two and lot three will have their exits there.
Well, one already, where does one go off? Onto Larson Way?
It has access to both, I mean, but it's not a legal right of record to you without those lots three, two, and three, without the 25 easement for access.
Yeah.
Well, I guess it could be because it's, it does front Blackburn, but
And that was originally concerned with the plating. The subdivision was access management.
Yeah. Well, I guess I'd like to, at the least, see a report from Andy Stone about the, whether that's going to lead to a more dangerous traffic situation or not, or whether the volume of traffic out of those driveways is going to be not enough to. I just don't like the idea of coming up a hill and having people coming at you from the right, and in three different ways in a very short period, very short space.
Yeah, I knew, I know that was your concern at the last meeting when this was tabled.
Does that, when you look at this little, this smaller drawing, does, where does lot 14 go out? Does it, it goes out on Blackburn Road too, but down further? Most.
There's another lot on the north side of Larson's Way, I believe.
Well, there's a little, little tiny lot 13A, and then there's lot 14 next to that. Lot 13A looks, it's right on the corner of Larson Way and
Yeah, I think, as I recall, Mr. Lovedoll had come in for another minor amendment to the subdivision to add a lot. And that was done, boy, that's over a year ago, a year and a half.
I was just wondering where those, those lots come
That's probably the 13, 13A.
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
I just was wondering where those, do those access Larson Way, 13A and 13? I can't tell from this. See?
Well, 14 would have to be on
14 must go out there. 13 could go this way or that way.
It doesn't really say on the plat.
There's another, I believe, right there.
Yeah, it says an ingress, egress easement, right there.
Right. That was another lot that fronted on Blackburn and not on Larson's Way, and is the same kind of situation as the other two lots are with an easement essentially off Blackburn, off, getting everything off the street, getting onto Larson's Way and kind of coming into these lots
Yeah.
-- via a back door, an easement across another
So those all, that, those, that comes out that way.
So lot 14 does have the ability to be accessed
In the back.
-- over an easement, right? But I think Mr. Lovedoll only requested that the two of those lots be able to come out onto Blackburn.
Yeah, he's just talking about two and three.
Right, not lot 14.
Well, because nobody's probably balked at that one. Right? If somebody balked at coming that way, then he might do that. I don't, I mean, I can understand people that, for not wanting to have that go through there. I can really understand that, but I don't know about that. As I recall, that was really kind of a hard way to get in and out there when we were standing out there to look around that curve, so I would like to know what Andy says too about that, so. So what are we going to do here?
So you want to table it and make a formal request to the street department director to give us an
Tell him what he says, what he thinks, yeah.
We didn't take it off the table, did we?
No, we just re-added it to the agenda, I think, just because that was
I don't, that last time, it wasn't really, wasn't it just an information thing? I didn't think it was a formal case left, was it? Where are the minutes? I can't really turn them over.
Well, I'll make a motion if you
You're in.
That wasn't on the
I don't think it was there last time, was it? Was it?
It was a communication
Communication, that's what, yeah. So it was no question of tabling or anything.
So we automatically put it on the agenda
Next, yeah.
Because it had been submitted at the time of the matter.
Yeah.
Okay. Go ahead. Did you move?
Okay, well, I, I move that we table this pending a report from the
Street man.
Street
Street person.
Director of Streets.
Street person.
Director of Streets?
Yeah.
Yes, okay. From the Director of Streets about the dangers inherent in having two more openings on Blackburn Road.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Okay, that's all. All right. That goes in there. You want me to put this in there too, Melissa, in this file?
Uh, yeah.
Okay. All right. Now, we don't have any other cases on here. We have number three, communications. Do we have any, I don't have any communications unless another communication came. Do you have any?
No.
Okay. You have no communications?
No, I do.
Number four is opportunities for citizens to speak about items not covered on the agenda. That leaves it wide open. Did you want to say?
I guess not.
You're the citi, you're the only citizen. She's a citizen. If you want, if you have, this is your opportunity to speak, but speak from up there.
My name's Mark Spezza. I'm with Century 21 Classic Gold, and I'm here representing Ed Renzelli. Since our last meeting here at the Planning Commission, we met with Andy Stone, Director of Streets, and Ray Hasslett, City Service Director, pertaining to a series of curb cuts on East State Street. Our subsequent meeting was with Ray Hasslett. That was on the first of this month. And in our meeting, Ray had indicated to Ed Renzelli that, based on his conversations with Andy Stone, if we were going to get curb cuts on track one on the plat that was before you at the last hearing, those curb cuts should line up from the south side to the north side of East State Street. Mr. Renzelli has further agreed, he has put this in writing, and Ray Hasslett does have a copy of this, that he would agree to share his curb cut with the neighboring property to the west, that's the Holes or Docks property. We have the application in, and I guess I was under the impression that Ray was going to try and be here at this meeting and explain a little of those details, but what I do have, I can share with you a copy of that agreement made between Ray Hasslett and Ed Renzelli, if you would like.
Okay. We can see it. He raised, one of his, going, the grandchild's being born up in Lancaster, that's where he is. He hadn't planned on being there.
Unexpected trip up to Lancaster. And as I said, this has all occurred since our last meeting, and in an attempt to reach an understanding that perhaps the neighboring property and Mr. Renzelli's curb cut could be shared, I guess it was my understanding that he would talk to members of the Planning Commission, and as I said, I do have this, I'd be happy to share it with you, and hopefully we can be put on the agenda for the next planning session.
Okay. Do you have copies for everybody, or just one copy?
I just have the one copy. I thought Ray, Ray had a copy as well, and I thought that he would be here.
I can go make copies.
Okay, so we can have it to see, okay.
This is a total of two curb cuts, then? The existing one and another one?
We're applying for a curb cut on the south side of East State Street, and then directly across from that curb cut would be another one on the north side, then access the 12 acres on the north side.
Now, where does Della Drive come in? Does it, I thought it came
Della Drive is about 380 feet from the curb cut, 370 feet from the curb cut.
I thought it came in right across from the existing curb cut.
That would, that would be maintained. They want two curb cuts.
Yeah, right. That's what I was trying to get. So we're talking about a second curb cut.
We would want one for each side of the property, and the idea is to line those two curb cuts up and, again, potentially share the curb cut when the Holes or Docks make any application to annex into the city or whatever. They're currently not in the city.
Has anybody had any discussion with them?
Well, the fact is, we have not had a discussion with them, but the, what our agreement is, if we're granted our curb cut, we will allow them to access that curb cut through their property, and at that point, Andy Stone and Ray will determine how any other curb cuts are handled on East State Street, my understanding. I do have the large plat, if that would help you.
No, I think I know what's going on. I mean, they have a curb cut probably four feet from your curb cut
That's, as a matter of fact, that
-- for property line or so.
That's the way we just, that's the way
And that way, you still get a curb cut to access five properties, not having any idea of what's going to be built there, and there's no way other than to make them use the other curb cut, other than negotiations. And it seems strange to me to not have a party that's in the negotiating, because I mean, maybe they would offer to let you use their curb cut.
Yeah.
Four feet away, or five, for property line.
Well, and it's not five properties yet, because we have no
Oh, I know, they want five.
I know, but that, but that access road is part of the, part of the deal, as far as I'm concerned. There has to be an access road that's
There isn't, there isn't access road accessing the
Four of the
Four lots and
A built road that serves all five lots, and you want to split into five blocks? That's what
Does this curb cut in track one line up with what?
It would, the curb cut in track one would line up with the curb cut on the north side of East State Street to access the 12 acres on the north side of East State Street.
What's there now? Raw land?
It's raw land, and there is no curb cut on East State Street accessing that property.
And that's owned by Mr. Renzelli, or?
That's owned by Mr. Renzelli. That's correct.
Well, I'd like to hear what Ray has, because I'm sorry, he's not here to tell us what
Well, this was presented
Yeah.
The day after our cutoff, so that's why it wasn't on the agenda, but
Okay.
Ray will be here next time.
He'll be, well, you can have him put back on the agenda for next, be put on the agenda for next time, so we can have his, his input and that sort of thing. It would be nice if you would talk with those other people before, to see what they say.
Well, I think the one thing I would like to see, because really, the, the application here deals with a curb cut that the Planning Commission doesn't grant.
Where, where
So safety director grants it. Where our concern is, is from the existing
Curb.
-- that lines up with Della, some statement within the overall track that at least track two, three, five will be served by adequate easements and everything for an access road that accesses all those. And I didn't see that on the last plat that was presented. I saw some easements, but it wasn't clearly stated that the easement was for roadway purposes, et cetera, et cetera. And, because, I mean, what we're doing here is the developer is subdividing property, but not, they're just wanting to sell that as raw land, is his current plan. Correct?
His current plan is to auction the properties off. That's correct.
Right. So those doing, should clearly be able to look at the plat and things, saying, oh, there's going to be, there's room for the access road, that's where my access point is. And from my looking at the plat, it wasn't that clear to me, and maybe, maybe it was on there, but I wasn't seeing it as a clear indicator.
There were, yes, there were two 25-foot easements
Right.
-- specifically designed for a private access road to those lots.
Right, but, but I didn't see the language, I guess, saying, these easements are for the purposes of water, sewer, other public utilities, and a roadway. Because each property owner that's buying is giving up and not having that as part of their property. It's an easement for these other purposes, but somebody in track three, if they wanted to bid on it, say, oh, I have the right to go across there and build my roadway.
Well, we'll have that clarified for you in the
Yeah.
Next
I will be here next, next time anyways.
Pardon?
I won't be here next time, but I better say it now.
I won't either, so we may not
We may, if, well, Harry is back and Ray, I don't know. So it's, becomes difficult in the summertime sometimes to knock people together. I'll be here, but I can do it by myself.
Are you going to be at Yerkes now?
Not then, no.
They're going to let you out.
They're going to let me out. Okay.
Well, we, you know, again, I just would like to say that, you know, we are aware that Ray Hasslett is the person that does authorize the curb cut. We're hoping that, you know, again, at some time here in the near future, this curb cut will be approved, and we'll bring our plat before you with all the corrections that you've asked for. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other citizen wish to speak? We did have, well, it's announced, and announcements and other business, we did, this was in our file, we all did go, except Harry, who was in Honolulu. Everybody went to this meeting that Bob Eichenberg had set up with the editor of the Planning Commissioners Journal, and we did that Tuesday, so we did all go, Ray and Rick and Peg and I, and Steve was there, and all kinds of people there, which was interesting to talk with them. He, I was at the Military Museum yesterday working, and here comes Bob Eichenberg, and going around, so they came in to look around. They were doing their tour of Nelsonville. It was, it was interesting to meet with some of the people who are on the, or the Regional Planning Commission, and also the people who are on their, writing their plans, so. Okay, any other announcements, other business? Our next meeting would be a regularly scheduled meeting on, whatever that day is, what?
June 21st.
21st. If Peg won't be here, Rick won't be here, so we'll have to see, but I will be, but we'll have to see if the other two are going to be here so we can have a forum. Minutes of the last meeting?
I had a few corrections, and I gave them to
I did too. We put your name on there.
I was here, part of the time.
Did you, before, while he's reading those, did you have, you always have something you want to give us or say? You didn't do anything? That one day you gave us at least 20 packets of paper.
Are you making any progress on the sign?
Oh, that's the sign thing. That's it. That's what we need. We need to get, remember, we talked about, because there's so many things about the sign, sign ordinance that needs looked at, that we should have a committee, a task force or some such thing through, with, work with the city council?
That's my recollection of the last meeting, when I did load you up with a lot of
Yeah, yeah.
Things.
I like all those things you give us, I'm just
And as this seems to be evolving, it may be a matter larger
Yeah, yeah.
-- than just looking at some limited
Yeah, that's it.
-- limited sections. Let's give you another example of something that just came up. Temporary sign ordinance includes political signs. It previously been limited to a maximum of 336 square inches, and I believe it's been so long ago that possibly Howard Stevens, a former council member, said that this is an old size sign, and these newer signs now are a little larger. They're actually, the standard political sign is 350 square inches. Well, I've just been informed in the last few days that 350 no longer is the standard size, it's more like 364 or something like that.
Who decides what's the standards are?
The, evidently, there are companies that kind of specialize in the manufacture of political
So they want bigger, spend more money.
I'm not sure what their reason, reason is, but they seem to be creeping
It's probably the size of their printing press.
The size of their presses.
They seem to be getting a little bigger and a little bigger and a little bigger and a little bigger. And one of the things about the state Supreme Court decision that I gave you, Berns, Working and Bernstein versus Paintsville Board Design Appeals, had to do with treating temporary signs in the same way. In other words, you had to treat them as if they were content neutral. You can't treat, just because of the content, you can't treat it a little differently. And as far as sizes go, you have to be as consistent as possible, or show an overriding public interest that some sign should be considered to be smaller or larger than some other, and in this particular case, a temporary sign. For example, the city sign regulation says a temporary real estate sign can be five square feet, yet a political sign can only be 350 square inches, which is a lot smaller. And so there needs to be some look at making those as close as possible, either reducing one or increasing the other, or showing that there is some overriding public interest, you know, to have a difference. So I guess essentially what's happening is this is still evolving, and I think at the end of the last meeting, I kind of made the proposal that maybe it's something a little larger
Yeah.
-- than, than just kind of piecemeal
Yeah, because
-- looking at. We were talking about, we were, in general, I think we were talking about temporary signage, but then there's also been discussion about maybe looking at the whole, at the whole sign ordinance. Mr. Sly goes back in town, maybe.
Well, there's so many different things come out, you know, things that, that we didn't even have before, and then all of a sudden, there's some kind of a new doodad or something.
Right. Started out with electronic signs. We went through that for quite a while, then you'd ask me for some more information, and I gave you some more, and this, it seems to be getting a life of its own, almost.
What, who's, what committee has that on council? Whose committee would be?
I'd say that'd be under Planning and Development.
Who's that?
Debbie Phillips is the chair of that committee.
That's what we were talking about Tuesday, wasn't it? That's who he's on.
Last time the sign ordinance was revised
Also talking about sign, or site review.
Yes.
Sticking it to the Planning Commission, too.
Oh, I thought they were going to do
No.
I thought they didn't like what we did.
There, it's my understanding that what they discussed, I wasn't there at the meeting, was that instead of just administrative review now, there would be administrative and planning commission review, so that there would be an opportunity for people to express any displeasure with us interpreting the code. If you call it interpretation, it's just, it's a multifamily building, it's in our three zones, it's allowed.
Wow.
I think that, that was part of the comprehensive plan, where it had recommended that anything other than one, two, and three family construction should go through what they called site plan review, which is very similar to what we actually do now, administratively, we have site plan review on all significant projects.
Yeah, I think there was confusion, or what's happening a lot, is that with the comprehensive plan, and as you know, Joanne, having so many different goals in there, that, and our code references a comprehensive plan as being a guiding factor to both council and the Planning Commission, and so people are interpreting and saying, well, enforce the comprehensive plan. Well, you don't enforce a plan, you enforce law.
Well, that's
And people get that confused.
Yeah, and you have to, all through that plan, when we sat there, and everybody sat there, it always comes back to a new ordinance or something being passed. It meant that something had to be done. It meant that something had to be done by, mostly by city council.
Right, and that's why we did those, whose responsibility. The Planning Commission has a number of them, because some of them are zoning things, and yes, we have to look at those, but as soon as, there we go.
So, if they want us to do site plan, does that mean that they're not interested in the signage too? So I would think Debbie would want to be involved in that, wouldn't you?
I think she's, has a committee...
Committee working on it.
...that has the Chamber of Commerce and a few other people that are looking overall at the requirements the city has for development, what is the process to go through, and is that one also looking at signage? Do you know, Steve, or?
Not that I know of, but I believe, it should be included, I would think, as, you know, just like you'd look at lighting, setbacks, landscaping, it could be as all-encompassing, and hopefully, I, I would like for it to be that, so you could go to one document and say, you know, here's, here's what it is you have to do, rather than kind of pick, picking them off individually. The last time the sign regulations were amended, that was done, I don't know, by, wasn't by special committee, but it was done in advance of the total amendment to the zoning code. The Chamber of Commerce had great input, as I recall, in that, and essentially, if it wasn't identified that way, it was, I think, like a task force, because they had quite a bit of input, and the sign regulations were changed in advance of the changes to the zoning code. They had been tracking together for a period of time, and then the chamber wanted, wanted the sign section to move a little more quickly, so I think they stepped forward and said, we'll, we'll leave this, you know, wider view with a, a different group of people. So what you may be considering is consistent with what happened, probably six or seven years ago, eight years ago.
Well, I think we need to do it again, but find out who wants to be on it, who wants to do this.
The more information I give you about signs, probably the, the more confusing it will be.
Well, I know, every time there's, well, if they did what I wanted, then we wouldn't have to worry about it.
What, no signs?
No signs.
It'd be a little hard.
Flat on the building, period.
People new to town, they'll find anything, but that's all right.
Well, if, if you want it, you'll find it, so they say. Okay.
Let's get back.
We, there should have been a motion, we didn't do it, you were reading them.
If I make a motion to approve the amendments as amended.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, all right. Who do you want to be on this task force?
Oh, not that one. I thought you were moving on to adjournment.
I guess I am, I'll talk to Debbie. Okay, who wants, she's moving to adjourn, it's, hey, it's only five after three, that means I have to go to back to work.